To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Normally, Mr. Pillar does the prayer, but tonight I just want to read a short passage. I mean, short, I'm not going to preach. If you just bow your heads for a moment, please. This comes from First Timothy, chapter two, verses one and two. "First of all, then I urge that supplications, prayers, and intercessions, and thanksgivings be made to all people, for kings and who are all in high positions, that we may lead the world in peaceful and quiet life." In your name we pray. All right, the reading and approval of minutes of October 16th, please.
Motion of approval is suspended.
Motion by Hack. Second. And second by Stern. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right, approval of the agenda. Any additions or changes to the agenda? If not, take a motion of approval of the agenda, please.
Who?
Motion by... Weidrich? Second. Second by Stern. Discussion? All in favor of this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the agenda is set. We don't have any engineers for this this evening. We do have an engineer's report, things to discuss on the engineer's report. Monty, can we go through these one by one?
These estimates?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can.
Or is this something we want to wait?
Now, they just presented these again. These are estimates for some of the work that they had outlined. I did include, for your review, some information regarding the Expedition Estates lighting. You have the engineer's preliminary opinion of cost. And then we had been in contact with a company called Gen Pro Energy out of South Dakota that does solar lighting.
Mm-hmm.
And we had received a quote or an estimate from them as far as putting lighting in. So I did include that, but that will be... These are basically all topics for further discussion with the engineers and how you want to proceed.
Monty, is that lighting for the entire community Sunday?
Yes.
It would be a huge difference.
Have we heard anything about anybody that has done something that skies all in? Uh, so little work?
We have not. This company is just starting to work with different municipalities in North Dakota. They were going to give me a listing of some of the other places that they've worked with that are similar climate-type stuff to see how well they are working, but I haven't gotten that yet. So that's kind of why I just threw this in here now and I can try and get some more information for the next meeting or when we discuss this further with the engineers.
Well, I think it's definitely valid if you're... We're looking at $100,000, $110,000 difference. We definitely need to explore this option and see what the law... Like you said, Monty, our... Weather, it might be an issue, but if this is a South Dakota company and they're doing work in the upper Midwest, that we'd like to know who else is using it too. We'll get more information on that. Sanitary lift controls for lift stations. Dan, do you know anyone of that?
No, I looked at it briefly. I only have to have some conversation with more to understand what they're looking for. Some things they handle, other persons to touch into are existing water tower system. But I don't know.
Okay. And let's just touch base quickly on the walking path as well as the... The concrete repairs to the walking path. Uh, 600... I'm sorry, 3,897... Is that square yards? Is the unit on there?
Yes.
I...
That would be basically to do everything that has some cracks and some failures in it.
Well, that's not even... That's almost not even doable. A quarter of a million dollars. And then asphalt, obviously, for the same thickness as $11,000. The longevity is so much different. Yeah, we'll have to come back to that again. We couldn't do any of that work till late spring in town. Do you ever have any questions on any of these that we wanted Monty to contact or engineer about?
I'm assuming Monty will be here for the next meeting?
Yes, they will be up there.
So if we got any good schedule list for any more discussion of the next meeting?
There's nothing to add on here.
Yeah, we're not...
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll wait.
If we got more questions or a better explanation?
Yeah.
I noticed on the access road for the... The TAM completed the restoration of that last week. David, have you looked at a gate yet for that area?
Oh, for a new power. I'm a Monty doctor, that one off this...
No, basically, that was on us since they didn't have TAM do it. We'll just have to go to TSC and get the materials.
Okay.
Is that a gate that has to be locked? Or not? Yes, it's locked.
It has to be locked?
Yeah.
If we're going to put a gate there, I would assume we would lock it?
Reason I ask is if we need a gate, I mean, if it is locked, yes, obviously, we need a gate. But if we don't need a gate, do we have to go a gate? Or can we just do barbed wire fence? I'm assuming it's going to be locked.
This would be for the access road going up to the water tower up by Terry Myhoffs.
Yeah.
You just pass right by Terry's, and that's the middle access up to the water tower?
When we did that with... Of course, that was USDA funding. They required us, Dodge, to have a secured gate, meaning it had to have a lock. I don't know if that necessarily transfers over in your situation exactly, but in that context, that was...
Per the USDA.
Per USDA.
And we don't have any USDA. Ours is all...
Well, and the access to the tower itself has a gate that's blocked. It's just the road going up there where we...
And that would probably be sufficient, yeah. But yeah, we had to provide video or photographic evidence that it was locked as part of the closing.
All right. And I don't remember ever hearing that as part of the... This is all prey down monies from the legislature. I don't remember ever seeing that.
No. There was never any mention of that.
I would like to see a gate there and it be locked, although just because that's... I think it's... It looks like probably too much fun of a road to be up and down the... And, uh, yeah, I'd rather just keep people out of there. So, yeah, we just take a look at that data. All right. Under the engineer's report also is Expedition Estates, the subdivision. And there's a note here that says underground work is completed. Cleanup and restoration is happened... Happening, but not completed, obviously. Where are we at with getting crushed asphalt up there, Dave? Are we giving crushed asphalt up there? What's the plan?
Not real. And Daryl talked to me about getting crushed asphalt, and he's talking about getting it in class five. And he never got ahold of me after that. I don't know what they decided on or what they're going to drop in or what they want to do. I feel that we needed that intersection by Parkers.
Well, we said we wanted asphalt, and they said they can't do it. And then they're going to do crush some product, so...
They were still going back and forth with engineers that they needed to do the gravel rather than the crushed asphalt so that it's something to do with the spring, especially when that crushed asphalt doesn't set up as nice when it gets wet underneath, like that, so...
I'm sure the hagamists would like to know what's happening with the roads. Absolutely. I totally understand. Our road going like up to Hishlins and that is... Was that a base of our crushed asphalt and then with the gravel on top?
No.
Just gravel?
That was... Yeah, that was all gravel, basically. That was prior to having all of the crushed asphalt.
Okay. So tomorrow, can we get ahold of Jerry and Daryl?
Yeah.
We're only doing from Todd Parker, the corner of Todd's up the... All the way across over there, their driveway, I believe, correct? That's the only area. Okay. It's not that far, so... Obviously, that's not our wishes to have any crushed anything up there. We've been asking and wanting to have asphalt there the entire time, as you did. There are things that are out of our control. So I apologize for that happening. Hopefully, tomorrow, we figure out something and get something in place up there so it's not a complete disaster to get near driveway. Do you have any comments?
Yeah, but not... They're not going to be liked, so...
I appreciate you holding back, though. Union State Bank Alley, we'll get that's on the agenda. Where is that on the agenda?
5B.
All right, so we're there. We're at 5B now. So resolution of necessity for the alley project being done from the bank to the union hall? Monty, you want to...
Yeah, that'd be from Central Avenue to First Avenue northwest, North Main Street, obviously, Japan, US, Union State Bank, and all the businesses. In order to keep moving forward, we need to do the resolution of necessity, allow time for people to protest, and then determine if protests are sufficient to make us stop the project or if we can proceed. This is just to get the goal rolling, so I can publish the resolution of necessity and contact the property owners.
Any questions on this?
This will just be presented based on the information from Moore as to their cost estimate.
And they do have a breakdown of her property, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, we need a motion to move forward with the resolution. So, motion by Weidrich. Second by Pillar. Discussion? Go call.
Weidrich? Aye. Pillar?
Aye.
Hack?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Okay, moving down to 6A. Heritage Park. We're going to cross off Norman Donovan and put body coverage.
Okay. Mr. Real Beautiful, I just hear the report on the Heritage Park bench project. I don't want to talk about that before. We visited with you, your concurrence in putting in 10 new benches, and they have come. And there's two of them up. So if you want to head over to the musical play park and look at them, certainly can do that. I think we were encouraged to do some fundraising, and we did. We have memorial benches, and it was... The bench project exceeded our wildest expectations as far as people donating money for benches or looking for 10 benches. We had 10 people who donated, so that cost was covered. We had, prior to that, looked for a grant from the North Dakota Community Foundation from their State Greatest Needs Project, and we received $5,000 from them in September. And the benches, of course, were already paid for, so we have $5,000 to be used in the park now from that grant. And what we would like to do, if you concur, is to put in some metal picnic tables. You know, they're weather resistant, they're pretty much maintenance-free, they're expanded metal, they're the same company that the benches came from. And we would use the grant for that project. There's some various picnic tables here if you want to take a look. And I think we can do pre-ahored picnic tables, and then they could just stay there, and perhaps the wooden ones could be used elsewhere. So that's really what we're looking at is, you know, we got grant money and we'd show that to use in the park.
The only thing I've mentioned is to Lauren, time and time again, when it comes to anything we do over there, which, by the way, the lights and the poles and the awesome, is making things so it's easy to mow, move things around. When you say metal or steel picnic tables, I think heavy and hard to move. So hopefully, these are something that's... Looks like you can probably slide them to use with the rails.
They're pre-stranded, sandy. I wouldn't say they're light. But the wooden ones aren't light either.
No, no, they're not. But the wooden ones are only there usually for... Well, we have a couple that we sit over by the playground area, but we...
There's about four of them, I think, and we wouldn't be able to afford them anymore.
And then I also noticed some extension of the sprinkler system over there too. Is that what that... Was that the orange pipe ones or that hour that you ran through the...
That was cable through.
Okay, for lights, okay. I know Lauren talked about adding a couple more sprinkler heads on the east end over there. Wasn't sure if that happened or not, but...
I don't think it happened. And I don't think we can use the grant money for that.
No, I'm not. I have no problem if you guys move forward with that. I don't think we need to make a motion on it or anything else. If anybody has any questions or thoughts, no. Keep up the great work. Thank you. The park is very proud of that thing.
It's looking good.
Yeah.
So glad that you know the picnic tables are in place. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, guys.
The only thing I might suggest is that when you get those, figure out a way to pass them to the ground because those have a tendency of disappearing in a couple of the other communities that it represents.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's too bad.
Yeah, so if you figure out a way to get those attached to the ground in some way or another, because...
You mean to anchor them down with a chain or something? Sounds so institutional.
It does.
Touch of pain, I mean...
It does, but two grand a pop, it was quite a shock to the system.
Yeah, I agree. I just...
Or maybe they're heavy enough that they can't really be moved.
Well, no, they could probably be moved by two cable pretty easily, but I just don't want to pour concrete piers and put an eye hook in it and put a bolt and a lock on it. I don't know.
Maybe the next step is old.
Yeah. Hopefully, they're...
No, that's a pretty busy road where the other community was kind of odd, where it was a little more mold.
Yeah, that's too bad. Thank you. You're welcome to save the rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Bend up you.
Bend there, not there.
You didn't notice the new lights?
Absolutely. And on Halloween, and they're all orange, that's pretty cool too.
Today? Today?
Well, we put out all the old ones out in place.
Good. Looks awesome. All right, 6B. Greg McCarthy.
Trying to be quick, but come to point out a few things that I think need to change. I think it's gotten to the point of being negligence, and I think I want to point it out, and hopefully, you guys can nip it in the bud there. First of all, I want to thank the commissioners, okay? What I say is sounds negative. I don't mean it to come off that way, but it's my way of pointing out the facts. And Monty Adler used to say I had thick skin because I could point out things and just point out the facts and say, you know, I'm trying to be fair and equal, but I want thanks to our city attorney here and Dan, of course, appreciate it. And then the one thing, I might have thick skin, I don't mind being fair and balanced, but what I'm going to say here always sounds worse to the lawyers. And I do regret that. I want to specifically say I apologize for when we talk about the lawyers getting sued and negligence because we always go, it's the lawyers. Well, we, the people, get together, make up all these rules, then we have some enforcement, and then we complain when a jury of 12 decides how it's going to be enforced. And of course, if it's not being enforced correctly, it's always going to be all on one. So we want to avoid that. And then I have to say this for myself. Last year, we all had problems, like to see some of that get avoided. What I say tonight, it's not a prediction of what's going to happen, but if I should fall, the last year, I fell walking so many times in the street because that was the only accessibility, that it was ridiculous. We're a community, we can do better, we have to do better. So what I'm saying doesn't preclude me, it isn't saying I'm going to do this, but if it should happen, I'm going to use the legal rights, I don't want to deny any of that. Sidewalks, I hate to be basic, but I do want to cover two things. Why are they important? And the first one always gets missed because the city is either growing or dying. There's no in-between. You're either expanding because your people are getting old and they're dying out, you need to replace them. If your community doesn't attract people, the minute they arrive in, they're not going to stay here. If I'm a farmer and I'm tired of moving my own snow, I'm going to come to the town, but it'd dang well better be something I can handle, something I can use the sidewalks, or I'm going to go somewhere else. And if you drove through Bismarck last year, you drove... And I looked at a lot of communities because I was kind of upset what was going on up here, and they were clear. Their sidewalks were open. We didn't do that. I mean, we want to avoid that. And the second is the safety. When I talk safety, it goes hand in hand with enforcement, and that means insurance. And the big thing here is when I talk insurance, insurance will cover you for an accident, but if you're negligent, that's got to come... That money's going to come from somewhere else. Now, in the city, I'll give example of my sidewalk. We cleared up to the next street, you got the rest of the remaining sidewalk, and the turny corner there left that. Last year, they put a 30-foot bank across the sidewalk. 10 feet over is the wall mark. They could have put there, that'd have been fine. But you put it on the sidewalk, that means the option of the person is to walk out on the county road. So it's kind of split the county road. I mean, whether it's still in the city limits, but it's a highway coming in, people are going 50 miles an hour. And we like to think that, but, you know, I mean, how big can it get? My neighbor down the street, there isn't a neighbor in that block that can't say we used to see her walk that street every day. Until last year, she had to quit because there was nowhere to walk, and we haven't seen her out this summer since. So it's important for old people to keep somewhere that they can go because if they stop, it ain't happening again. But if someone falls on that sidewalk, God forbid, a child goes up the street and gets hit, the first thing they're going to do is take a picture. When I can take a picture and I got ice and snow and then perfectly dry sidewalk, they're going to come to you guys and say, why isn't that cleared? You guys have to have a written plan. And I know you got codes, you got city codes that cover that say, yes, sidewalks have to be cleared, they have to be built, but if you're not enforcing it, who's going to pay for it? And it's going to be the city, I'm sorry to say, because we've gotten to the point last year where we accepted putting snow on sidewalks. And even a Facebook post this year from the city says, by the way, we're sorry, but we're probably going to put snow on sidewalks. Leave it in the street, because if you leave it on the corner, the edge of the street, it's not you dealing with the sidewalk. You've covered your... And I know people don't like the bank that you have to go... That's light. I would rather somebody pay for their insurance on their car insurance and have a little tougher time driving than somebody walk out, can't use a sidewalk, and get hit because if they get hit, it's like people that live in the town. I automatically get sued because it's my property. And I haven't cleared my sidewalk because the city put a dump, I mean, a full payload across it. Now, I can clear most, but when they put a payloader-sized dump, that's getting industrial-sized. Most people can't move that. So they're going to come and say, well, that's the city snow they put there. I know many of these same commissioners did a ordinance, what, probably three, four years ago, that says people can't put snow on the street. You guys have the same responsibility. You could put it up to the edge of the curb, but you've got to be careful not to put it on their sidewalk. Now, if you look at my neighbor right next door, there is a payloader dump, kitty in the corner, right across the sidewalk, not in his yard, not in the street, but right across the sidewalk. And that's about the only thing that's left. Can't have that. You guys are definitely going to get liable, or at least an upset. Everybody's going to get sued there. And then when you look at your city ordinances, here's something, and I know this is challenging, but how many properties have you guys added this year? And when's the last time you've enforced telling somebody that they haven't cleared their snow? Because if you've gone years without telling an empty property that they have to be responsible to clear their sidewalk, then they're going to say, not the city's never going to... They're going to look at your records and say, you're right, the city doesn't do anything, you're not responsible. They're going to go after you. They're going to rat the city. Unless the city can show that they're upholding. Now, we built a new park this year, show me how a kid gets to it. They've got to walk down the street. We've never built sidewalks to these. I'm going to pick on a friend, and I know he would put them in if the city told him to, but there's a half a million dollar house, multiple garages, arched driveway, not a sidewalk. So I can tell you, a kid is not going to be comfortable walking in most people's yards. And that's a city street, that's a city property separated by a residential, separated by another city property, that has sidewalk going up to the next adjacent, or into the city, and they keep it clear, but you get to that, there's nothing there. So it's going to be the thing of, you built a new property, the planner took a look at it, why is there no sidewalk there? Why have we added so many properties to the edge of town that we're not enforcing sidewalks? It's just something to consider for this spring because it's a little late now, but if you guys don't enforce it equally, then aren't you guys going to take the negligence and take liability for it? And I know we don't want that. I know you treat... I have, it used to be Donovan, I know he doesn't clear... Probably have to clear snow outside of city limits. And once you get to the city, you're joining a community. You want to be able to look at it as a community, not a bunch of abandoned properties here and there that aren't being cleared, that aren't... We've got to take care of it. We've got to make our city look good. And I'm just... Well, covered that. And this is the other thing I just want to cover for the paper because it's more warning to the people. I see properties all over this year, and last year especially. You've got elderly people, you've got people that just don't want to go up shovel, and you can't cross anywhere there. But their driveway is dry. And you can't tell me that any insurance company is going to cover their insurance, is going to cover a claim if someone gets hurt walking around there, because first of all, they're going to take a picture, and they're going to show their sidewalk has never been shoveled, but their driveway is perfectly clear. And we've got age and disabilities and stuff in the city codes giving a... but their driveway is perfectly clear. And we've got age and disabilities and stuff in the city codes giving a a mitigating factor for if somebody is impaired, which is understandable. But what you have to be cautious on, if the community challenges, if you're clearing your driveway and you're not clearing your sidewalk, you're running your own risk there. I don't care whether it's a shop. I don't care whether it's a garage. I don't you see businesses, we all say, yeah, they keep their, why? Because they can't afford to get sued. They'd have to raise the prices. And the same for the homeowners, but we've gotten, kind of gotten lazy this year. Kind of started with too much snow last year, but we want to avoid that. And I'm seeing it start right away this year, so I want to come to the meeting and implore you guys, come up with a plan. You've got all these sidewalks. You should have a written plan that says, are we covering it? Because most of them, you'll have them down the main side and the sections that go to the residential, those aren't clear. So if you put the yellow pads on both sides of the street and you put yellow pads, and we put all them in, they're going to come down and say, well, you recognize that as a entry point. And you recognize that sidewalk that you owned, yet you're not clearing. Did you put out a low maintenance sign? Did you put out a closing the sidewalk? No, we just decided not to clear it. Well, that leaves someone walking down your sidewalk that has to walk out on the street. They'll get hurt. Who's going to pay for that? Sure rather she doesn't want to go to something else. That's it, guys. I'm sorry and I appreciate the time.
I just want to respond a little bit, Greg. A couple of things. I guess prior to where I live now, I lived for about twenty years down a part of town. Sidewalks are, as you know, the homeowner's responsibility. The boulevards around the town can range from, from the curb zero inches, as you know,
Right.
to fifteen, eighteen feet is the curb to a sidewalk and boulevard is that wide. Now, since I moved to that place in two thousand and one, I don't believe that any commission member ever said a word about shoveling my sidewalk or the neighbors shoveling their sidewalk. It's one of those things, Greg, that I guess you have to decide what battles you want to fight. The snow removal is a yearly, it's never the same. Last year, we decided to change the way we do our snow removal. No, we burmed it up to the middle so many places. Let it set there, let people drive through them, spread them out, make a mess, re-burm them, haul them out. So we were burning a lot of diesel, a lot of manpower, a lot of overtime. So last year, we changed that process, as you know, that we do push to the curb now. Last year, we made a crucial mistake and we've spoken with Dave and our guys that we did not get it far enough to the sides last year. We did not get to the curb last year in all places. Now, there are spots where we were two feet away, but as the winter went on last year, as you know, we got nearly a hundred inches of snow and you just couldn't, you keep pushing the side, then this road gets narrower and narrower and narrower. That wasn't perfect. But the amount of complaints that we received, and I've been sitting at this table for over ten years now, every year, people wanted to see a change in how we did snow removal. They did not like the burming up. There are certain areas of town where we have our main emergency routes, main street, past the school, hospital, many areas that we still burm it up the middle and haul it out. Those people that did not like the way we did it before, don't like it the way we do it now either. And there's, sometimes you're just not going to please everybody. Your property, Greg, is a unique property, as you know. Last year, how many times did we get a ten-foot drift blowing across the county road, across intersection, into your, into your, behind your house where the alley is? Not many, not many other properties in town, other than maybe Divide, you know, does that happen too? So that's a unique area and it was a pain in the ass, to be frank. And as you saw, I don't know how many times we were out there with our guys. You know, you could, there were days where we could applaud that thing three or four times in a day because of the wind and the way things blew in there. It could have not even snowed and we'd still, it still blew in sometimes. We can do better. Like you said, we can, we need to do better, we can do better. We're trying to do better, Greg.
Oh, I started with.
We're changing. Yeah, I wrote that down. I appreciate that.
And I do. I seriously believe that. I'm just concerned about that one area. And I know the streets are going to be tough either way. No one likes to pay the whole order.
But we are lucky that we've had two weeks ago, I was having a panic attack. Think we're going to have a Groundhog Day of last winter with the snow coming and not leaving for nine months. Thank the Lord that we, that we've got some melt going on. One of the issues, when we were removing snow a week and a half ago, is that we couldn't haul it out. We can't haul it out, Greg.
Too soft to get rid of.
Absolutely. We can't haul. Our dump sites are, we'd be, we'd still be stuck. So, you know, and then having the rain right before that as well, things are just so soft. We can't. We're trying to do better. Last year, our summer city worker crew really pushed us hard to make a change as well with the community members of changing the snow removal. This year, yeah, Greg, it's, we're going to have issues again. It's just the way it is. But we are going to be pushing to the sides as far as we can, to the curb. We can push it up on the boulevard. That is part of that, the boulevard is an area that, unfortunately, your sidewalk is your boulevard.
Yeah, you can push it farther than.
Right, but.
But you can't, what I'm saying is, who's going to take liability for that?
Probably nobody because it's open and obvious. That's the law. If it's open and obvious, there's no liability. Unfortunately, slip and fall cases are historically some of the most difficult cases to win that there are. But that doesn't minimize a broken hip or something like that. I mean, that's a very real thing. But the reality of it is, if it's open and obvious, it's the individual who's walking who's bears in all likelihood the responsibility of that slip and fall. Whether that's the city, whether that's Walmart, whether that's a property owner, if it's open and obvious, they're assuming the risk, unfortunately.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's a tragedy.
So I assume you know what happened.
Yeah, I know. And that's why when I, like I said, I see dry sidewalks everywhere except where, and the city's doing a large scoop. They drive three feet more and up on the grass, on what I call the boulevard. I mean, I can't do anything about the city planners from years before deciding we're going to accept this new, and Monty's even pointed that out, that the measurement is off and there's a number of issues. I'm not saying there isn't issues. I just, right before we get started saying, if you want to, if you're going to drive up and get rid of snow, you got to take it in that area, three feet farther, dump it in the yard. You did in parts, parts you didn't, but we should be trying to keep them sidewalks clear.
Dave said.
The problem we have trying to push past the sidewalk to keep it, say, on a boulevard but off the sidewalk, is most yards, the grass and sod is higher than the sidewalk. And when we push and try to do that, we roll people's sod, people sprinkle heads right up against the sidewalk. Come spring, we're hauling black dirt, we're reseeding yards and we're replacing sprinkler system. So I mean, it's tough. I understand some homeowners want their sidewalks, we're in a couple spots in common already this year, we get rolled sod, trying to push past the sidewalk. I don't have the answer, but that is, that is a problem. That's tough.
Yeah, here was a scoop. You just, you look at it and go.
Yeah. Greg, we hear you a lot. Thank you. We hear you a lot and clear.
Okay.
You do have thick skin and we have to as well. You're in the assessment board. Thick skin. We are trying to be better. And we're trying, we're also trying to save money for the community too. That's why we changed our our snow removal plan a little bit too. So Dave's donated it and I.
That's all I can ask for. That's all I, that's all I wanted to do because I.
All right. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I didn't, anybody else talk? I'm sorry. Anybody else want to add anything? Number reports. Water sewer.
David, here's the beginning of the meeting, or maybe before everybody was at the table, but our garbage truck is up in business. Seeking repairs, it feels like it would be covered under warranty, but it does take it out of service for a period of time for yourself. I don't know that it's getting in the way of our ability to provide all services to our citizens right now.
No, we should be fine with the old truck.
Okay. So hopefully this is the last time we have to worry about something like that.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Streets, cemetery.
Uh, Dave, informed us before the meeting, our ninety-six Freightliner truck, dump truck. We've had the radiator fixed two, three different times, record, whatever. Well, now the bottom of the radiator, where of course the plastic is, that's cracked out and it's beyond repair. So Dave, it's a brand new one, right, Dave?
Yes, true.
They've got a quote on it and when we go and get the garbage truck, we could pick it up. But I make a motion that we purchase a new radiator for the ninety-six Freightliner to the total of two thousand seven fifty-four eighty-eight. I'm assuming that's plus or minus tax?
Should be no tax.
No tax?
Here, we have motion by Hack. Second by Weidrich. Discussion.
I know we've gotten by on that for a quick, some time.
Free has fixed that a couple panels, right, Curtis? All right. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Hack. Hi, Weidrich.
Hi.
Hiller.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Omenhour.
I, motion thirty.
Just to add on that, Jerry, we didn't notice that when we hauled the piles, the three or four piles, five piles remain. We noticed that, we corrected.
Yeah.
Um, other than that, the jury don't touch on the other thing that, you know.
Did you haul out to the
We hauled out by the.
Grass, grass side?
Yeah.
All right, Casey, finance, passing library.
So I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. So Weidrich, police fire, orchestration.
Hi. So we are no longer looking for an officer, if you guys haven't heard. Officer Anthony Melbert pulled his resignation and was accepted and was put back onto the force to put backup to full staff there. The twenty-twenty-one Tahoe is in need of tires. Chief Wolf got several quotes from around. There is also a soybean tire grant. Problem is, it's sized tires that go on that Tahoe aren't on this list of approved tires from Goodyear. There's one that's pretty close. It would work. It's about a half inch taller and just a tiny bit narrower. Problem is, there's no money available right now. Sounds like they have money, but they haven't allocated it yet. And they're going to talk about it in their meeting in December, correct?
For the soybean tires?
For the soybean tires, yeah. And you can get upwards of a thousand dollars on that grant for first responders. But you, we would have only had one option of tire for that Tahoe.
But it's not available.
But we don't, it sounds like there's money available. They just haven't allocated it yet.
Is that through the state or is that?
That's through the soybean council. So I don't know if we want to go that route. When we were talking to them last year about it, it did sound it was like one of those, you purchase it, then you apply for the grant, then we reimburse you for it. So we still could go that route and hopefully in December they do allocate that money and they may not allocate that money. You know, so it could be hard to gamble and obviously Goodyear tires are fairly expensive too, so. Or we just scrap that for now and we have, you know, several other quotes we can go with.
I think we scrap it. But what's the longevity of these soybean tires? Is there any history on them yet or?
I'll be honest, I couldn't tell you which tires, well, besides this list in front of me, you know, other than that, I couldn't tell you any other tire that's made with soybean oil. Maybe there's more out there. I don't know. So with that being said.
It's nice to try to find that money, but.
Yeah. I'd like to make a motion to purchase the Destination, Firestone Destination AT twos from Fiddle Oil for eight hundred and six dollars and fifteen cents.
Dave, we have motion by Weidrich.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. And I saw your quotes. Go ahead.
Excuse me, how many prices are there? Were these new soybean tires versus the traditional?
I don't have prices on these soybean tires. But Chief Wolf got us quotes anywhere from seven hundred dollars all the way up to fourteen hundred dollars per tire. The cheapest was seven hundred and seventy-one dollars.
I like that one that does a motion and it's got a little meat on it. If you know, it's not quite as, just a straight highway. So we hear a little off-reading from time to time.
Okay, we have motion and a second. Any more discussion? Roll call.
Weidrich.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Hiller.
Hi.
Omenhour.
I, motion thirty.
All right. Then we also got the call of the service for the police department. This would be for the month of October with a total of a hundred and fifty-six calls of service. Officer Anthony Byers, oh, sorry, Alan Byers for thirteen. Officer Samantha Melbert for seventy-two and Chief Wolf for fifty-nine. That's all I have.
Any questions for Buster? Good deal. Thank you. Okay, Buster's not here for HCD. He didn't have any to read, Monty, did he?
No, he didn't.
Okay. Under my report, I'll touch on a couple of things. Buster was here. He probably want to have mentioned that there was a press release which all of you didn't receive, that Talon Metals did receive the federal DOE monies. A hundred and forty-seven million?
Hundred and fifteen.
Hundred and fifteen million. And that is, they're going to be moving forward with building this battery plant. We don't, I don't think it says the exact location other than Mercer County. But it does, it does enhance our coal extraction and it will also bring up north of a hundred and fifty full-time jobs in the Mercer County. As any other industry that we have around here, those hundred and fifty jobs doesn't mean that they'll be living in Hazen and Mula and Zap and Stanton. Could be, there's Mandan, Dickerson, mine out, but it's an opportunity. Could be, is Mandan, Dickerson, Myhoun, but, uh, it's an opportunity, uh, for our county and, uh, it'll also add some, uh, tax related evaluation to the county as well. But, uh, I, I think that their Talon Metals wants to do a, um, town hall meeting here in the next week or so. Um, will they all be, and I believe that might be at the Beulah Civic Center, where they'll be fielding questions about many different aspects, of the, the project. I know one of the big things that they've already caught, been in contact with Strat, I believe it's Strat, um, uh, to talk about how they'll be using some of the byproduct for concreteness. So it's important. Be, be listening, watching, there'll be more announcements about that. Uh, the other aspect I want to talk about, um, is that our ladies in the office, um, they're kind of our frontline defense when it comes to dealing with our, with the community. Um, they feel a lot of phone calls, um, and just try to keep good connection, you know, talk about, you know, communication, how, how we can, you know, Facebook page, uh, between them, our police officers, um, information from street, the streets to whatever. Um, and the gals found a couple examples of what other communities are doing for communicating with the public about snow removal, things like that. And we did have a couple examples and we, we decided to, uh, to revamp it, not drop, rebuild or reinvent the wheel, but, uh, we do have, uh, the city's snow removal plan and it just talks a little bit about emergency routes, um, what's, what's the responsibilities, um, things like that. On here, you know, some people may, in our community, could have lived here for years and don't understand that we do have garbage collection every Monday, Wednesday and Friday, which is over half of our guys. You know, we have three people that are, you know, that can't be helping move snow or things like that on those, on those three days. But this is just something that they're gonna be putting on Facebook page. Um, a lot of these questions came from, or these, these responses came from questions they got from community members the last couple weeks about snow removal and things like that, so they put this together and will be, and Dave, Dave kind of worked with them and kind of piecemealed it together with, uh, with a couple examples that we had, so just wanted to show this to you guys tonight and, um, we will be, I'm moving forward, getting this out there to the, to the public. That's all I have for my report, um. Any questions for me? Okay, moving down to eleven A, old business. Uh, permit code enforcement software, I work, Monty, you want to talk about this?
Jerry and I had a demonstration of some software that's for tracking permits, uh, inspections permits and then code enforcement, the mowing stuff, uh, like Greg mentioned, we could probably be a little more aggressive on the sidewalk stuff, but they did send a short presentation then. If you. If it'll play. Let's try it again. Well, I guess we won't be able to explain anything. Uh, just goes over some of the stuff, it's, it is a pretty neat system as far as you can put, incorporate our GIS map. If you're out tracking your own, you can go ahead and just mark a spot on the map and it'll start, you know, there's a new building going here and then you can start to input the information, then it'll track it. And you can set it up so that it will keep track of the inspections, any fees, all of those types of information. Similar with the code enforcement, if you go out, you're driving around, anybody that is driving around, Dave could have it on his mobile phone or a tablet and say, this address, put it in on the map and say, this address has grass that exceeds our ordinance. Then it would, it would give a notification, any enforcement officer, he could go ahead and issue the letter to the people or issue a citation for it or, or hold up on it and, and set alerts that this grass is supposed to be mowed by this date and if it isn't, then you can keep track of it and then you can issue the citation or recite them in court or whatever, whatever our process is. They incorporates all of our ordinances for, for printing, the permits and, and the code enforcement.
First, it would require that you have I work applications for code enforcement or license management where you'd be planning its owning to see these additional items that are taking place on this parcel. In addition to tracking permits back to a parcel and keeping track of the history, within the I work application, cities and counties can also track certain workflows, certain items such as fees, inspections or planned use that need to be added onto a permit just by accessing this menu off to the right-hand side. When it comes time to issue a final certificate of occupancy, I work account managers can help you build out more specific letters and permits, and by selecting our app on the right-hand side, selecting from this drop-down, issue, the city can issue any number of permit platforms or cars, uh, depending on the type of permit that it is. One of the items I work can help you build out is a QR code that can be attached on, to build a platform. Now, this QR code can be scanned by an inspector or a contractor, could take that person's right two five or something portal where they could check the status of this permit. They could also request inspections on this permit and any additional items that they may be interested in as far as looking at this permit. This application, all I work applications has the ability to build out specific reports that may be required for administration or council or commission meetings. As I scroll down, within this application, cities have the ability to save your reports once they've been built for easy access. And these reports could be anything from monthly financials such as, you know, how much money has come in versus how many, how many fees are still left to be paid. Uh, we can run, uh, specific reports based off inspections or planned use and any other data that the city may require and need. One of the features of. This application is the ability to set up scheduled reports which would allow, uh, or to be emailed and sent out to the person that is requiring reading that report at a frequency that they're choosing and that report would be emailed through an Excel spreadsheet or .CSD document. Just like all our I work applications, we include free online training and free technical support. That's included for the life of this, uh, for the life of the contract, um, so feel free to call us at any time.
And there is their proposal. Would be a two thousand dollar startup cost for year one. And then they, they build in a three percent increase every year, so it would be two thousand dollars with a three percent every year after that barring any other changes. It's a nice software, do we need it? I can't say we absolutely do. Right now, we are tracking all of this, these different permits and fees and inspections with an Excel spreadsheet and the code enforcement has also done with an Excel spreadsheet. Uh, we issue twenty-five to thirty building permits a year, which isn't a lot since we don't require building permits for shingles or windows or any of that stuff unless the floor, the floor plan itself changes, we don't require a permit for maintenance type things where a lot of jurisdictions do. So you get into about fifty, sixty permits a year, yeah, you can justify this pretty easily as far as keeping track of stuff where it's at.
And the permits would pay for this as well at the same time, but.
To a degree.
To a degree, but I, I'm not sure, this is, I want to let Monty chew on this more, you know, this is what he'd be using directly. So it's one of those things where, yeah, I think it'd be nice, it might move us a little bit more current from what we're doing, um, and easier to track it. As we know, Monty's taken on another, the assessor and planner position on top of the auditor position, I think it might help. Uh, maybe alleviate a little bit of workload for him. He's not said that, you won't, but I, I said it, but, um, I don't know, I think it, two thousand dollars a, a year and then, and, I don't know. It's one of those things where if we had a money tree, yeah, it'd be nice to have. I'd do it automatically. What, we need the input from you guys too. Um, well, we, we watched this, uh, we had this tutorial about a week ago and, uh, the company is out of Utah, they did a nice job, they do, they have, they do quite a few, um, Montana cities, um, some South Dakota.
Beulah uses.
And Beulah's using as well, yeah. Did you talk to, um, Heather at all?
I, Heather and I have talked about it a little bit, but there again, they're doing eighty, ninety, a hundred permits a year.
Because they do shingles, windows, they do a lot.
Ornaments is set up, so yeah, they are using a lot more. And they're too, they're using the engineers for their inspections, who are a little more savvy on using these types of applications. I don't know how well that would work with our inspector.
Yeah, our current.
Our current inspector, yeah, and that can change at any time too. I would put this as a want, not a need. And like you said, we can get some more information, I can visit with Heather some more, or Heidi some more in Beulah and we can always bring it back.
All right. If you guys want to stop in to see Monty, he can show you more specifics, more detail on it if you, if you'd like as well. Okay, so right now this will go on the wishlist for Christmas and not, uh, not with a bow on yet. All right, um, eleven V. Water plant listing agreement. Uh, you guys all saw the listing agreement that was on the agenda, um, this was century twenty-one. And you can see that the starting of the listing, list price will still be at two fifteen, but there, obviously, this is one of those things where, um, it can be marketed much better by a professional like this than what we had it out for bid. So, um, we just need the blessing of the, of the board going to move forward and, and go and use this, um, listing agreement with, with Heather at century twenty-one. Does she have a better idea or different idea? And we do need a motion for this.
So, go ahead. Who think it's?
Motion by Weider?
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. So I guess I didn't see, I guess, what the selling fee is on that. I don't know if I.
It is, um. Second, yeah. So I will pay the broker compensation of six percent from the purchase price?
Oh, now, now, you, you want to get that right now?
No.
Can you read that or you want to see?
I'm okay with that.
That's my bad. Okay. We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Weider.
Hi.
Hack.
Hi.
Hiller.
Hi.
Stern.
Hi.
Orenhour.
I have a motion, Jerry. Twelve A, drug and alcohol, second chance policy.
During the audit by the Federal Transit Administration, recommended considering updating our policy from a zero tolerance policy to a second chance policy whereby, under our current policy, if somebody is unable to provide a sample, we are supposed to treat it as a refusal which would, which would lead to action to terminate the employee for that failed test. So their recommendation was to call the second chance policy whereby if somebody does test positive within a certain range, they could go for an evaluation and treatment and retain their position. Obviously, there could still be some disciplinary action, but it would basically, just as it says, it's a second chance.
And Monty, we have to, we have to take action on this one way or the other?
Well, it's either that or we'll.
Lose our funding.
Well, no, we'll keep our funding, we'll just have to continue with our zero tolerance policy and like everything else, ensure that it's handled equally to everybody.
Monty?
You know, I've dealt with this with a couple of different communities that with Dodge and Haliday, we recently updated their manuals and as a general rule, I'm always hesitant to deal with zero tolerance policies because it's, it's way too easy to, in some instances, have a mistake, whether it's prescription medication, whether it's alcohol that you thought was out of your system and you happened to hit a mailbox and all of a sudden you gotta do a test because of a snow removal accident. With a zero tolerance type of policy, all of a sudden your options become very, very limited. And if you're not following that manual and you're opening yourselves up to some liability that was spoken to earlier, so I tend to like the second chance policies a lot more because I think that they build in a little bit more flexibility to deal with the situation and the severity that it is if the individual is taking it seriously. Um, if not, I think there's still grounds for termination with a lot of these second chance policies and so, um, but the zero tolerance type policies, I've seen more often than not that they do a lot of harm, particularly in a community like Hazen, for example, where you have something happen to, say, a city worker. Yeah, that's bad, finding a qualified replacement, it can also be very much a challenge if they're not willing to, if you can't have the option of, hey, let's look at, seriously at some treatment, so I guess that would be my two cents. Is you can be setting yourselves up for some real headaches down the road potentially.
Good points, thank you, Mark. What would the board like to do? We, we can, we can also put this on the next meeting's agenda as well. Doesn't have to be, now, if you don't, do a lot more, do a lot more research? Or we can act.
And I think the state's gone to more of a second chance policy themselves too. Not that you have to follow what the state does, but I think they got from the zero tolerance to a second chance policy. to a second chance policy.
Make a motion to approve this second chance policy.
Motion by Weeder.
Second.
Second by Act. Discussion.
It almost sounds to me like there's, you can still act on the same as a zero tolerance.
If, if the circumstance warrants it, yes. I mean, I think it builds in a little bit more flexibility where zero tolerance, if you're gonna follow zero tolerance, zero tolerance means zero tolerance, where a program like this, you've got a little bit of flexibility. It still can be very serious, but very serious still provides a potential role for redemption
Okay. Mr. Pillar, are you hearing our conversation?
Yeah. So my, my two cents on this here is, I feel like if you have something that is habitual, it's, with that second chance, it's still gonna come back in my mind. My idea is the explorer to, to fellow workers and stuff like that, if they, if they do that, but it sounds like we have the flexibility, if it's something that's pretty flagrant, we would still have the opportunity for termination in certain, certain circumstances and not necessarily going down the path for such chances as true.
Correct, yeah.
Thank you, Dan. Hey, we have a motion in a second. Go call.
Weeder.
Aye.
Hatt.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Omenhour.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
Which leads us to twelve B, random drug testing program.
It's the agreement to proceed with global safety network on a grand force to administer our random drug and alcohol program for our safety sensitive positions, which are defined which, as I said in the notes, would be our police officers, firefighters, heavy equipment operators, the garbage truck drivers, waste and sewage, and then anybody with a CDL, which is quite a few of our staffs. The cost is the same as last year, it's still $70 per safety sensitive employee. Let's say we have four, nine of them. Oh, eight. Excuse me, would be fourteen of them, including law enforcement.
And that doesn't, and then, what do we have for fire?
That doesn't cover the fire, they're voluntary, they're not, they're not employees.
Okay. Maybe they need a motion to act on this.
Sold.
Motion by Hatt. Second by Weeder. Go call.
Hatt.
Aye.
Weeder.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Omenhour.
Aye. Motion carried.
Okay, down to thirteen, public comment? Anything you guys want to Greg or take my system or comment to any?
I guess I do actually kind of have a question about, you mentioned the lighting for that, if you can say it.
Yeah.
If you're getting that one, next time around, if you have that, whatever, but what, I hear on top of the street lights, or the whole area?
Yes.
Yeah, the whole loop, yeah, yeah.
So would that be a resident cost?
No, well, I don't know how that would work, if that's an SEPS cost over, you know, twenty years.
That would still have to be determined by the board here.
So not, not that same?
No, none of that.
No, no. But you heard the difference in pricing.
I guess I could kind of read the law, it was around $8,000.
Yeah, and the engineer's estimate was $186,000.
For.
For buried.
In-ground buried, yeah. I've heard of more and more places using it at solar, it's just another option to look at versus the other. You know, if that was the case, it was, you know, how many lots are up there, thirty-two?
There was originally forty with, with the commercial house, there was forty-one or forty-two.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So then on that deal there too, you know, you know, I guess I always thought that that was gonna be then like part of that, part of that, then the next development, you know. That was, lighting was never, never part of that agreement. Infrastructure, roads, but not, not lighting.
I'd say that should have been part of the original plan, yeah.
Well, I thought that was the, you know, it's a pitch of theirs, you know, you know.
I don't believe that, but me.
Then all that stuff is supposed to be done, and after that, after then, they're gonna say, say then, say then, I mean, you know, you guess, all that stuff is gonna be then, all that stuff's gonna be then like turned, turned then except back to the city, you know, you know. And on that part, then, all that stuff was gonna be done, and stuff, we didn't have to do any other work, you know. We can look at the details of the agreement, I don't think lighting was ever part of that incident. And it never was pushed until Buster was pushing it, you know, for, he likes to walk early, and it's just a safety thing. Some developments, I know there, one of my friends that lives in a new development in Fargo, part of their covenant is to have no lighting. You can't even have your light stay on all night, on in your yard light in your house, has to be remotely, so it only stays on for ten minutes.
I didn't see anything. You can take the one out next to my house, I'm over it up there, I'd be happy.
We'd pay him, huh?
The one beside the bedroom window too. So Travis, the difference is 186,000 versus 79?
Well, I'm sure the engineers are well aware of this, but like, where the power is now, it's down the middle of the loop and then it's around the outside, you know what, so now they're gonna be trenching in through everybody's yard. You know what I'm getting at, it's, it would be kind of messy then.
And I don't know if it's, eight of them around the loop, or?
According to that, it says eleven.
Eleven, okay.
Doesn't say where they're at.
Well, intersection with, of the corners for sure, but anyhow, yeah. More discussion on that. Again, I'm sorry for the, the mess and the, and the hassle.
It's construction.
Well.
And I know it's not easy.
Right, but it's, it's, you know, and we, we, yeah. We're actually lucky we had slight construction, because we had nobody else that was gonna do it. And that's part of the deal too, with, with them, is just, you know, being spread out between other projects between around, I can't, yeah, anyhow. Thank you for your patience.
I hope there's no patience.
I know.
It's been a long, hard month.
It has been, you're right. Uh, approve the bills.
Motion to approve bills is presented.
Motion by Weeder. Second. Second by Stern. Go call.
Weeder.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hatt.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Omenhour.
Aye.
Motion carried. The adjourned. Thank you.